Contract for the license to be sold?
To have a contract is what they just asked for.
A question of procedure, can we amend that amendment? Or do we have to vote it up or down and then?
I think you're the one that made the amendment, so. Arlette, I'm sorry, Arlette, you started the amendment.
Pepcorn made the motion to amend.
Commissioner Pepcorn, go ahead.
Let's just vote on this proposed, and then if it fails, then we'll vote on another one.
Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
So, do I have another amendment? Commissioner Strand.
Well, I think what everyone's asking for is 30 days. And if in those 30 days, we should have a purchase agreement with another entity, not to include the folks already involved. And then if they have that, then they'll have time to sell the license.
There's a second.
If not, it will be revoked.
Is there a second? State it again, please.
If 30 days to get the sale under contract, so it doesn't have to be final, it can be under contract. In those 30 days, if they don't have someone under contract to buy, then they'll be revoked.
Second. Moved in second. Commissioner Preston.
Please clarify how that's different than this previous amendment?
The previous one was, it said the sale. So if in 30 days it wasn't a done deal, then it would have been revoked, and that's too tight of a timeline.
If they have a legal arrangement, then it will go ahead. Didn't have to be, the sale didn't have to be completed in 30 days because they have to come to the commission of the new owners.
Eric, yeah, I think the implication that we're kind of all talking about is they have a contract in place, in writing. Presumably, they present it to you at a city commission meeting within 30 days. And if they establish that, you know, binding purchase agreement in writing with someone other than the current ownership group, then there would be additional time allowed to process an application and allow the transfer of a going concern. So it'd be treated as a transfer of a going concern under the ordinance. So it wouldn't all happen right within 30 days, there'd be a bit of a process, but they meet the threshold with a written agreement.
Commissioner Preston.
So, and Eric, maybe you can answer this one. So if someone is on the buyer's side that doesn't meet our background criteria, is that revocation immediate then?
I think that's the intention of the motion, yes.
Okay.
Subject to having a viable purchaser that can ultimately receive the transfer, yes.
Roll call vote.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Now, do we have to vote for the original motion, which was revoke the license?
Well, you have to vote on that, on that motion. This is now, what we just said.
It's an amendment to the motion.
That is, this is the new motion, right? So 30 days revocation, we're just voting on it again, basically.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Can we just repeat that again? So what are we voting on this time?
Really, your amendment is what's fixed the first motion, which Garrick had said immediate recavation.
It's the same motion.
But John then modified it to the 30 days and you can sell it. So you're just verifying the same thing. Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
No.
Preston?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We'll adjourn for five minutes, and then we'll start city commission. Call a meeting back to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Garrick?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Health, with the increase in hospitalizations and positive cases of COVID-19 in the community, it is more than important than ever to take precautions to stay healthy. Influenza is a serious disease that can lead to hospitalization and potentially fatal. Getting the flu shot can keep from getting seriously sick with the flu and can reduce the risk of flu-associated hospitalization. Check with your healthcare provider and local pharmacy to ask about flu vaccine. For city employees, there are flu dates coming up, which we're going to have in different parts of the city facilities. Library, as part one of One Book One Community Events Series, a panel discussion titled "American Indian Boarding Schools and the Doctrine of Discovery" will be held September 28th at 6:30 PM at the downtown library. Featured panelists are Joseph McNeil, Karen Van Fosten, and Holly McKee, who will discuss how federal policy and religious doctrine have served to advance religion as an expression of free-market capitalism at the expense of indigenous communities in the United States. The library's outdoor story walks has been updated for the fall. The story walk outside the downtown library features a book, "A Fall Ball for All," by Jamie Swenson. And Brunsdale Park Story Walk features a book, "Grumpy Monkey," by Suzanne Lane. The library is hosting an educational exhibit of posters through September 30th that recount the events of September 11th, 2001, through personal stories of those who witnessed and survived the attacks. The exhibit includes archaeology photographs, archival photographs, and images of the artifacts from the 9/11 memorial and the museum's permanent collection. Tonight, we have two videos. The first is from the Ribbon Counting for the Spirit of the Sandbagger Monument, and the second is from construction update of the new water reclamation facility.
The Lion's motto is "We Serve." One of our members, he's here today, Mike Benson, had an idea, a vision that would create something to commemorate our 100th and at the same time honor the community in which we live and serve. We, as a community, appreciate public art. Look at this art, ladies and gentlemen, it is public art at its finest. The Spirit of the Sandbagger is a vital piece of public art for many reasons. First, it is crucial that we honor the men and women whose steadfast dedication to their neighbors, their city, and community never wavered. We had 100,000 volunteers in our community fighting the flood fight, but the most important people that fought the flood were the neighbors, the homeowners that lived along the dikes. And I'll always remember the great work all our floodfighters did.
The many Lions members present here today from the Fargo Lions Club, the Gateway Lions Club, and the Horace Lions Club all understand the importance of community service. As Joe said, our motto as Lions is "We Serve," and as Lions, we strive to live out this motto every day. We sincerely hope that all who pass by this monument to Sandbaggers working together to accomplish goals only possible through their collective efforts will be inspired to join in on various efforts within their communities.
It's a lot of wastewater. Here comes West Fargo wastewater, right? There we go. Is there a motion to approve the Art of the Agenda?
I say move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 7th, 2021 regular meeting?
Move, do approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items 1 through 30?
I say move.
Second.
Moved in second, it's Strand. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
We go to the regular agenda, we have resident comments at this times. Wes Filome is up first.
Wes Filome, he/him/his pronouns. I'd like to start by saying, long live George Floyd. And with a heavy heart, I must now add Anuwe Machik. I know that public comment is typically reserved for matters relating to city business, but I'd like to point out that the recent passing of my friend and family through activism is most definitely city business. At 22 years old, Anuwe Machik would create a spark that would forever alter the course of Fargo, North Dakota. Her one small gesture would see that over 3,000 people would touch the streets of Fargo in the name of equality. If not for her, there would be no One Fargo. There would be no hate crime ordinances to protect vulnerable people in our city. There would be no diversity, equity, and inclusion position meant to be a voice for those without one. And there definitely wouldn't be a me standing here speaking in front of you. Oftentimes, we honor those who contribute most to our city within these chamber walls. I think it's only right that we honor someone who impacted not just our lives, but the lives of generations yet to come. Anuwe did not seek attention, nor did she seek recognition. She only wanted what was best for all. I would like to take a moment of silence to honor the passing of my sister and fellow activists. Long live Anuwe Machik. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Christopher Cohen?
Yes, Christopher Cohen, resident of Fargo. I'd like to talk about the Wildlife Management Program. So one of the main, if memory serves me correctly, one of the main objectives in June that the chief brought up when he suggested rescinding the ordinance that kept the program in place was the public safety issue. And I did, they did allow us to attend the study group meeting, and the public safety issue was completely de-emphasized. So the main points that were made there were regarding the bull hunter safety. And there were a couple other public safety issues mentioned, but they were small and few. And since that time, I have asked the chief for, to be able to look at the report that he's working on so that I can see where this whole study is going. Now, by the way, at the study group meeting, we weren't allowed to make any, ask any questions or make any remarks. So the really, you know, public was allowed to be there, but we could not participate in any meaningful way. We had important information and comments to make. I mean, there really should be public involvement, but there was none allowed. So I've asked for the report that he's working on, and he quoted part of the Open Records Act that allows them to deny anything that's being worked on. In fact, it can be denied all the way until October 4th, when he presents the final report to you. Now, if that's the meeting at which you vote on it, that means that we're not going to, the public is not going to have any involvement in this whatsoever, right up until when you vote on it. So we're not going to be able to see it, look at it, think about it, ask any questions or make any comments on it. So I'm asking that he share what he's working on sometime before that, whether it's a week before that or two weeks, or that you hold off on voting on it till sometime after October 4th. And I wanted to say that, you know, I've been riding my bike on those paths in the park, and they really are heavily used. And there are quite a few parents with children, and I've even seen deer along there and crossing the paths. Thank you.
Richard Thomas?
Richard Thomas, Fargo resident. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm here to talk about park safety and park users feeling safe while they're using Fargo's nature parks. The archery hunting in the nature parks, or as it's known, the Experimental Herd Reduction Program, has proved to be ineffective, never reducing the population of deer to any significant number in the Fargo River Channel. I attended the study group meeting, and it was acknowledged that deer are mobile and quickly backfill for any that are killed. Even if they were all removed, it was stated they'd all return within one year. So the program is basically ineffective. When the program was created, much less usage of the nature parks was at that point. Things have changed in the 15 years since. The Fargo Park Board has done a wonderful job of improving the nature parks with parking lots and miles of trails. The nature parks are used by hundreds of people today. They are used from dawn until dusk for hunting, jogging, dog walking, biking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, and people go off the trails to enjoy nature other than just on the trails. During the Labor Day weekend, I went to the trails and collected 139 signatures from people who are actually on the trails, and they said that they don't feel safe with the discharge of deadly weapons in the parks while the parks are occupied by the public. Many were not even aware of the hunt going on, and when I showed them the sign, several families actually loaded their children back up in the car and left because they didn't want to take any chance. If you search online, any archery range in the country, you will find one thing in common, they do not allow the discharge of arrows while people or pets are downrange. So effectively, this program allows the entire park system to be downrange while the hunt takes place. So real or perceived, nature park users don't feel safe in the parks while the hunt is going on for five months. Now, I've heard comments that this same program is going on in the city of Bismarck in their parks. So I called the park district in Bismarck and was told that that's not true. They do not allow hunting in Bismarck parks. They do have some undeveloped land, and you have to have a special permit that allows you to trespass on this undeveloped land in order to hunt, and even then, they have safe zones set up because some people come on that property and use some of the old existing trails. So why do we continue to allow the discharge of deadly weapons in occupied Fargo parks? Fargo Park users do not feel safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard? We go to the Public Input Opportunity. We have 32A, District of Fargo, Fourth Edition, 5532 and 5676 38th Street South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission. Growth Plan Amendment in Lots 3, 4 Block 1. Zoning change, limited commercial to conditional overlay with an MR3, multi-dwelling residential and limited commercial with conditional overlay. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and apply to the District of Fargo, Fourth Edition. Donald Crest, do explain.
Thank you, Commissioners. Donald Crest of the Department of Applying and Development. I'll be presenting this item tonight, and this item includes an ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor has stated, this is the District of Fargo, Fourth Edition. It's located here on the west side of I-29, 52nd Avenue and 38th Street. Here's the Walmart that we all recognize here. And the aerial photo on this large property, this 39-acre property is the best depiction of it, but we do have some on-the-ground photos here from this morning. It is, again, it's an undeveloped property there. Here we're looking southwest from the Frontage Road and then along 38th, north along 38th Avenue South, or 38th Street South, rather. The proposed plat proposes 10 lots in two blocks and also dedicates a public street through the property called Tillstone Drive, a named street here. There's a growth plan amendment. The current growth plan depicts the property here as entirely commercial. The developer proposed to have a residential component and so proposed a growth plan amendment that would allow the, basically the center part of their property here to be designated as medium-to-high-density residential with commercial on both sides. The current zoning is limited commercial with a conditional overlay. The proposed zoning will also have limited commercial, but will have that residential down the middle, it'll look like this. A limited commercial here and here and on the east side, and then the multi-dwelling MR3 in the middle. And these will all have a conditional overlay that is attached to your packet. The applicant, Austin Morris and Tim Gleese of Enclave Development, are with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Staff's, the Planning Commission's recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen, Commissioners, if you do wish to go forward with this, please use the motion on the screen, the wording's a little better in that one. That concludes staff's presentation, thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present wishing to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Commissioner Preston, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pepcorn? Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Special Assessments for Maintenance of the Skyway System, Steve Sprague, explain?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we're presenting the maintenance of the skyway system, which is assessment that covers the heating, cooling, and cleaning of the skyway. We've kept the assessment at the same $100,000 that it has been in the past and received no protests.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to Special Assessments? Present who wishes to speak? If not, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, Commissioner Garrick.
Steve, they asked to be assessed for this, right?
It was an agreement when the skyway was built. So it goes back to the 70s or whatever it was.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item C, Special Assessments for 2020 New and Reconstruction of the City Ordered Sidewalks, Project SR20-A. Steve Sprague.
So Commissioners, I want to explain why this one is separate from all of the others that we're doing. The, all of the other projects have a location and comprising in which we identify what that assessment district is going to be with the sidewalks. They're more sporadic in nature, and so they could be, you know, a section of sidewalk here and a section there. Because of that, and it varies from the other special assessments, the North Dakota Central Code spells out that we should, that we treat them separately. And so we have the assessment list of the projects that were, or the sidewalks that were improved last year, and we've received no protest on this assessment.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this? Anyone present who wishes to speak to their sidewalks? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Preston and Garrick, okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Garrick?
Yeah, Steve, just so people know, if their sidewalk is bad, they can have it fixed themselves, they don't have to go through the city and get assessed, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
So if you want to fix your sidewalk, you may, but it doesn't go on your specials, right? But if we fix it, it goes on your special assessment.
That's correct.
That's correct. Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
And now we have a special assessment list of the following improvement districts, all have been approved by a Special Assessment Commission. Steve Sprague.
So what we're presenting today is $39 million of project cost and $23 million of assessed cost. They have been bonded and the assessment of collecting, the collection of these assessments will retire the bonds. There are a total of just under 6,000 parcels that were affected. At the Special Assessment Commission, there were two people there with protests. One of them was, I believe, Don Laram, and his concern was with the Millan Overlay Project, PR20E, and he just was checking to make sure that the spread affected everybody in the area. And then the other person was with Main Avenue, BR19A, and that was Lee Watkins, who owns a corner of 8th and Main, and he was concerned primarily with the assessment on a parking lot.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the special assessment list? Anybody wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pepcorn, Preston? Any discussion? Commissioner Garrick?
Steve, with these assessments, does that, does this have the point 75% added on top of it for our interest rate?
That is correct, yep.
And since we've already got the loan for that, that's not negotiable at this point? Is that true?
That is correct, because we're paying back bonds that have the pledge to the bond.
Thanks.
Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item E, there's continuation to 11-121, it's an application to transfer a B-alcoholic license to Dakota Liquors or from Dakota Liquors. Do I have a motion?
Continue.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
If we're going too fast, I'll slow down for you.
Microphone's not working.
Okay. Application filed by Beyond Shelter for payment lieu of tax exemption for a project located at 2301 University Drive South. With the application, will use operation of 92 affordable rental housing for seniors. Jim Gomar to explain.
Thank you. These next two projects are both from low-income housing developers who are trying to address the need for more low-income housing for elderly persons in our community. Both are using low-income housing tax credits. They're a little bit different, but one of the key things that they need to get their applications approved is to show city support. And we can do that, in one case, it'll be with a letter and the pilot, but if they don't receive the payment lieu of taxes, not only is the project not feasible, but they're not likely to get the funding because it's, at least this first one is quite competitive throughout the state. So this first application would be housing at the former Kmart site. The, it would be built in two phases. Each phase would have 46 low-income housing units for seniors. They're asking for a 20-year payment lieu of taxes for the first three to four years, they would not be paying anything, then there'd be a gradual payment. We're able to do this because these are 9% credits, and so they're, you know, provide a lot of resources for the, for the project. I should note, the zoning on this is still pending, but the reason we're bringing this to you tonight is that their application deadline is Thursday of next week, on September 30th, and so they need to show some support from the city. So approval of this pilot would be contingent on you later approving the zoning. With that, I'll introduce Dan Maddler from Beyond Shelter. He can provide more information on the project. What you see on the screen is the overall site plan. The blue would be the housing, which is towards the back of the current Kmart site. The front, those red parcels would all be commercial type uses. And Dan?
Thank you, thank you, Jim, and Mayor Mahoney, and members of the commission, thank you for your time and consideration of Beyond Shelter's pilot request. For the record, my name is Dan Maddler, I'm the CEO of Beyond Shelter Incorporated, a Fargo-based nonprofit developer of affordable housing. Beyond Shelter, in partnership with Enclave Development, is working to redevelop the Kmart site, and as Jim mentioned and as the scene can shows, basically, this is conceptual drawing, the commercial is represented in the maroon color, and it's just conceptual as well, it's subject to change, I just want to basically disclose that, and that is the piece that Enclave will be working on. What we're working on through Beyond Shelter is on the left side, the blue, which is basically two phases, 46 units each, basically, but when completed, the two buildings will be joined and it'll look like a total, as you see on the screen. Essentially, each building, like I said, will have 46 units, 38 one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. For community space, we'll have a community room. Ten of the, of the units will be fully accessible and then in each, each phase and so a total of twenty units and there, just back there a little bit, you can see the, the two multicolored, the phase one, phase two was basically identified. The location itself is highly desirable because of the healthcare that's close by. You just cross under I-94 and you have a hospital indoor clinic area, facilities. Also basically through conversation, in public conversations, I know a potential commercial tenant could be a grocery store and so the potential to have amenities next is also desirable. There's currently a bus stop on Twenty-Fifth Avenue South there on the, on the south end so from transportation perspective, that is ideal. Easy access to I-94 and then also services such as banking. Regarding the need for affordable housing here in the Fargo area, Beyond Shelter's been developing affordable housing here in Fargo since early nineteen, well nineteen ninety-nine but essentially multifamily since about two thousand and three and to date we have three hundred and twenty-five units that serve elderly population. As of September one, we added to that total to get the three twenty-five we placed in service, Home Field Three, which was thirty-nine units just south of the Red River Valley Zoo off of Forty-second Street and just a little bit about what we're seeing as far as vacancies. So prior to Home Field Three, our basically, last year in two thousand and twenty, our vacancy rate was two-point-two percent, which is essentially turnover and that has narrowed in, in two thousand and twenty-one. Our year-to-date vacancy on our affordable senior units is actually one-seven, one, one, one-point-seven-five percent. Placed in service, Home Field Three on September one, to date we have basically twenty-seven of the units already leased, eight of them, we have an additional eight applications pending and we anticipate to be fully leased by the end of October. Also included in the packet, basically talks a little bit about the quality of our work and the community itself. So I included some photos of some of the buildings but also some of the beneficiaries of the project to kind of put a face to the name, but essentially who we're serving, average tenant age of our senior units is seventy-two, approximately sixty-nine percent or one-hundred-and-ninety-three of the two-hundred-and-eighty-six units that were placed in service prior to Home Field Three and that called one of our units home are extremely low income. That is thirty percent of the area median income or below. To kind of basically look at that, the average income for those tenants is seventeen thousand five hundred dollars a year. If you wanted to convert that to an hourly pay rate, that would be eight dollars and forty-one cents. And essentially the tenants pay approximately twenty-nine percent of their income for rent and so the average rent for those two-hundred-and-eighty-six units is four-hundred-and-twenty-three per month. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration and stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questioner, questions? Mr. Garrick?
Once the incentive goes away, this will remain low income throughout. There's not a time where it would switch over to regular housing.
Mayor Mahoney, Commissioner Garrick, that's correct. Essentially, our deed restrictions will restrict the property to be affordable for thirty-one years at a minimum because of the, some of the sources we're applying and then as a nonprofit developer, we would continue that as a mission-based.
And just to reiterate, all the units are low income.
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
And last question for this one, this is just for your portion, this is not for the commercial portion at all.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I make the recommended motion. Can I just hit Republican first?
I'm sorry.
Is there anybody present who wishes to speak to this pilot? Anyone wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Strand?
I, I move the recommended motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just want to add thanks Dan because this is awesome, this is a great thing. Obviously that Kmart site at this time, it's a magnet for other bad things going on and so we're very happy that developments are going on there and to have, have this type of anchor to the block, I think is going to be a great addition and so thank you and thank you for all you do for our community because obviously older housing, low income housing is super popular and it's going to be growing and that's, a lot of people want to live near healthcare and so this is, it's kind of an opportunity for our city so we're very fortunate. Beyond Shelter's a great group and, and I do think our city and our staff do a great job of partnering with them, so thank you.
Yeah, an event the other day in which some of the residents spoke to their shelter that you do have and she was a lady that moved in off the farm and she really appreciated being in low income housing, she could afford it and then in closing the medical facility. So she gave a great testimony to the projects. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item G.
This next one is also a request for payment in lieu of taxes for a low income housing project. The applicant here is the, it's a combination of the Mountain Plains Equity Group based in Montana and Community Works, which is based in Bismarck but does affordable housing projects throughout the state. The, the site is south of the Cass County Jail, a few blocks south. I think within the past year, you had approved the zoning for this that allows the, the housing at this particular site. This would be a seventeen-year pilot where they wouldn't pay taxes for that first seventeen years. There'd be a transition kind of in years sixteen to seventeen where it would shift from being owned partly by Mountain Plains Equity Group and partly by Community Works to where the full ownership transfer would transfer to the Community Works nonprofit, which will then qualify for a different property tax exemption where they will pay five percent of their rents as income. This particular project is using four and a half percent, or four percent low income housing tax credits. They're not nearly as valuable as the nine percent, which makes the funding even more difficult. We've been talking with local developers about trying to utilize these tax credits that have gotten unused in North Dakota, but because they're not, you know, quite as valuable, it's been really difficult to get a project funded. The only one I'm familiar with that's used them, I think there was a rehab done and then Elliott Place for a portion of that project used a four and a half percent credit so this is good and it would bring some additional type of tax credits. In order to kind of use these, this is a larger scale project, this would be a hundred-and-twenty unit building, it'd be eighty-two one-bedrooms and thirty-eight two-bedrooms. That size also allows them to create some amenities on the site. They'll have Don with Mountain Plains Equity Group address the city commission, he's got some interesting numbers too on the demand for low income housing in town particularly with the growing elderly population that we're projected to have over the next five years at least. Don?
Thank you Jim. Mayor Mahoney, members of the city commission, thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to appear before you. I was here last year about this same time as we were going through the zoning process. We have now purchased the land and do have ownership of it, we're moving forward on that. For the record, my name is Don Stirhan, I'm the president of Mountain Plains Equity Group. We are in fact based in Billings, Montana, although we do business in a multi-state area that really includes, it's six states, but it's primarily North Dakota, Wyoming and Montana. In our history, our eighteen-year history, we started in two thousand and three, we've developed fifty-four projects now that are in our portfolio, thirteen of those are in North Dakota and we have two more of them in the pipeline including this one here in Fargo. We began doing tax credit syndication, which is lining up investors who have an appetite and interest and putting capital into low income housing projects and marrying that money with the development and the developers themselves. So we have a long history of putting those projects together. We have five private equity funds under our management representing about two-hundred-and-fifteen million in tax credit equity that has been invested in these projects. In two thousand and ten, we also started to wear the developer hat because we felt like it was important in the profile and the, and the footprint that we work in, we were seeing a lot of opportunities going by the wayside and things falling through the cracks. There was a need that wasn't being addressed in many areas and that's where we felt like we could take our skill sets and our expertise and be a little more proactive about promoting affordable housing where it was needed. And we've done that very successfully through partnerships. We like partnerships with, with groups like Community Works North Dakota and other nonprofits. Sometimes it's an economic development group, it's a housing authority or it's a local nonprofit that shares the same mission-driven intent. So that's been our background. We're very proud of this particular project and that we feel like it serves a very well-known and documented need in Fargo for affordable senior housing. This is a property that's four stories and it's designed in a U-shaped configuration so that, there you go, we have the, the front entrance which is facing south onto West Track, so we have a nice port of cachet there and you can see that it's an attractive building. We're working with Nate Vellmuth of Goldmark Design here in, in Fargo to do this project for us. This is the interior, this is the courtyard in the middle of the U shape, so we're providing some landscape and, and a nice area for the residents. I think the point of this is that this isn't just an apartment project for seniors. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we, our design is geared to create a community. We're looking for interactive opportunities with the residents so that they have the chance to socialize, it's camaraderie, it's the fellowship and we provide the amenities to promote that, such as a lot of common area space with a kitchen and lounge area, we have card rooms in several locations, we have a fitness center, we have a media room and a library, so there are a lot of opportunities to promote that interactivity. We're, we're targeting the lower income seniors that are fifty percent of area median income or sixty percent, it's one of those two categories. As Jim mentioned, we have a hundred and twenty units in total, split eighty-two are one-bedroom and thirty-eight are two-bedrooms. Our range of rent goes from a low of six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a month to a high of nine-hundred-and-thirty-five depending on your income class. So we think it's making a positive dent in providing affordable housing for the seniors. I'll close by saying, again, it's, it's always nice to follow Dan Maddler because he does such a nice job of talking about the need in the Fargo community, so I can only echo his words, but I will offer a few more specifics. When we did our market study on the Fargo community, we found that not, not only was the need verified, but we put some numbers to it that between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-five, the expectation is that there will be an increase in senior households, those sixty-five and older, of five-hundred-and-ninety-four. That's in just five years. Renters would be two-hundred-and-eighty-nine of that group. So it's increasing quite rapidly. In North Dakota's own two thousand and sixteen North Dakota statewide housing needs assessment, it looked like the statewide, the demand for affordable housing amongst seniors is even worse. Of those same households, there's an expected increase in ten years of fifty-four percent, amounting to thirty-seven five, thirty-seven thousand five hundred households that are going to be looking for affordable housing. I think we're all aware we're not yet at that point where we can supply that kind of inventory, but we believe this is an excellent step in that direction. We've appreciated the support and the recognition you've given us to date and we ask you to continue to do so in this latest request. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this pilot? I don't know anyone wishing to speak, if not, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Can I ask a couple of questions though or should I wait till after the second?
Let's have the second first.
Second.
Moved and seconded, okay, now go ahead.
So if you don't mind me asking a couple of questions, first of all, I like to have Dan have competition, that's my main thing because I, I think we don't want him to get too fat and happy and so that's, but the, a couple of signs about this, first of all, they're from Billings, Montana. That is great news for us to have outside people starting to get into this. Can you talk about the challenges and maybe Jim you can too about this four percent versus nine percent and how it has to be a larger, can you talk about that from your investment perspective?
Yes, and first I'd like to say, Dan Maddler is not competition, he's my comrade. But it's, it also goes to the point of the four percent versus the nine percent. The nine percent credit is the one that is so highly competitive and those applications are due in about another ten days. We are not competing for the nine percent, so we're not a competitor against the proposal for Beyond Shelter in that respect. We are however competing for other funds that are available through NDHFA, other soft money programs that are available. The four percent credit is kind of interesting because it's so underutilized really, especially in these areas that we're working in. It really says, you know, your tax credit calculation is based on a four percent rather than a nine percent number. So without getting into the weeds, it means that we're getting equity capital into the project that's virtually about half of what a nine percent deal would bring to the table. However, it's unlimited, so we can use as much as we want. So if we can make the four percent work, it gives us an, an opportunity to tap into a resource that really isn't utilized a lot and if we can do that successfully, then we leave the nine percent alone for other projects like Beyond Shelter and other applicants elsewhere in the state. So we've really tried to make an effort to make the nine percent work, but it's, it's often very tricky because you don't have so much equity capital in the deal. So how do you make that deal work? You do it with size, scale, where we're looking at bigger projects, a hundred and twenty units in this case, that helps, the economy's of scale. The other thing that is helping this project frankly is the location. If we can identify a site within a qualified census tract, and this site is, then we also get a boost in the number of credits that we can qualify for above and beyond the four percent. So that helps the numbers work as well and it gives us a chance when we're located in the qualified census tract to provide a little more vitality to that community and, and take a lead in helping to shape that community in a, in a quality fashion. So we're very proud of that and we, and the numbers are looking good and we're excited about it.
Thank you very much. And Jim, can you just talk about the nine percent? The thing that's frustrating for the city of Fargo is we are not getting our fair share. A, a lot of the nine percent loans are not coming to Fargo, they're going for political reasons to western North Dakota. We have the majority of the population and so can you talk a little bit about that and how can we try to get more of these projects into Fargo?
Well, I think we saw kind of a drought of projects during oil boom because then there was a lot of effort to build housing in western North Dakota. I think more recently we've been more competitive, but you know, the, the projects are extremely hard to, you know, to fund. We had two that were approved for downtown last year, one, Dan Maddler's Milton Earl, but you know, that's been delayed as they try to deal with utility issues and some other costs and, and I guess the other bad news is that the one plan for next to the edge art is flats, that the costs were so high that they actually just returned their tax credits and have dropped the option on the property and so, you know, if, if we don't come to the, you know, participate as a city with these lower income housing tax incentives, they don't happen, even sometimes when we do, that, you know, they're able to get them done. Part of the, the good news this afternoon was that Cass County voted to participate with both of these projects, so we're happy to see that and we've certainly heard no objection right now from the Fargo School District, so it's important that all the local governments participate with these, but yeah, the, the nine percent, they probably only do four projects statewide, about forty units each, so when you hear these numbers of what the needs are and realize statewide, there's less than two-hundred units a year, it's, it's really maybe discouraging.
Any other discussion? Mr. Carrick?
Just the same questions as before, this is going to remain low income housing for the foreseeable future, is there a turnover at some point?
No, that's, that's correct, that is the expectation.
And they are all for low income, not a portion or not some, but these are all low income?
Yes, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Next item is a request letter of support for the Prairie Ridge Residence Housing Project. I have a motion.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. COVID-19 update. Desi Fleming, are you on the screen?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Statewide COVID cases continue to increase and are now just under 3,000. Cass County currently has 528 active COVID cases, which is down five from two weeks ago, but that number also includes over 70 cases from yesterday that recovered. Our current wave of the pandemic is now the second highest and climbing. Hospitalizations have increased by 21 individuals since the last report and are totaling 120 people statewide. 83% of those hospitalized are not vaccinated. The average age of hospitalizations in North Dakota for a fully vaccinated individual is 74 years, and the average age of an unvaccinated individual is 56 years of age. Local health systems, as well as health systems across the state, are running at high census with decreased staffing resources. Last week, over 30% of new COVID cases were young people, those under 18, as compared to 18.8% since the pandemic began. There were 31 new cases in children in Cass last week, with a seven-day total of 150 new cases in children throughout the state. Breakthrough cases to date total around 3,500 and account for slightly over 1% of total vaccinated cases, which has increased some with the Delta variant, but this still remains very, very low. The age category with the most active cases in Cass is again the 30- to 39-year-old demographic, with the 20- to 29-year-olds in a close second, and the 40- to 49-year-olds in the third place. As noted previously, we are still seeing increased cases in the younger age groups. Cass County, as well as the majority of the state, remain in the high transmission category. Cass County does have the highest vaccination rates in the state, and they continue to inch upward. That being said, North Dakota as a whole still ranks 46 to 47 out of 50 in the nation for fully vaccinated people. Our lowest fully vaccinated rate in Cass continues to be the 12- to 18-year-olds at 43.9%, which is up about 3.3% from my report two weeks ago. 19- to 29-year-olds at 46.1%. 30-years-of-age and up range from 53 to 78.9, incrementally increasing with age. The pandemic is still being referred to as mainly a pandemic of the unvaccinated, but it is important to note that this group not only has those that are choosing to not be vaccinated, but also has those that cannot be vaccinated, including children under 12 and those with contraindications to vaccine. There's not been final approval for booster doses or details regarding who will receive them. We should learn more Friday when the ACIP is scheduled to meet. At this time, it's looking like those individuals who initially had the Pfizer vaccine were over 65 years of age and those at severe risk of severe disease. They also may include healthcare workers. We will certainly update the community as we receive final approval and guidance to move forward, so stay tuned for that. As you recall, Fargo-Cass Public Health no longer has contact tracing on-site as that was transferred to the state Health Department this past spring. The state contact tracing stream is currently behind in case investigations, so assistance will now be provided by the North Dakota National Guard. The Guard has been trained in the process and will be joining in those efforts starting this week. They've also shortened up the interview portion for new cases in an attempt to get through cases faster. That's all I have for an update. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Desi, I would, again, I want to acknowledge you, your department, and your people, and I hope you're all hanging in there okay. It would, I can't imagine that it's easy, and it's a long row that you're hoeing. I'd like to say this. I've traveled across the state. I saw leaders from across the state at the North Dakota League of Cities these last few days. And it's important that we acknowledge and say how proud we are of the Fargo School Board for making the courageous, right decision for the sake and the health and the welfare of their families and their kids and their staff. They need to know we have their back. And we have leaders in the school district that have shown courage, at least six out of nine. They're showing courage and they're making the right decisions for the right reasons. That wouldn't be easy either, but I just feel it's important that it be said publicly that it's a critical leadership they're providing, necessary leadership, and appreciated leadership. So if you could pass that on as well to the school board, to others, and I hope other school districts. And in our region, we have, you know, 48% of the West Fargo School District lives in the city of Fargo, more than live in West Fargo. So I commend our local school board, and I hope that West Fargo leaders and others will step up to the plate because this is a critical juncture in time. And thank you, Desi.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Desi. Let's give a flu shot out there. Drought update. Bruce Scrub and Troy Hall. Got a lot of rain lately. Doesn't seem as dry as anymore. Best barometer we have for city is the grass in front of City Hall looks like it's come back from dead.
Yeah, my neighbor boy has gotten rich ever since we declared a drought warning.
Yes.
And it was actually about a month ago, August 23rd, at the commission meeting where we gave a drought status report. And at that time, our indicators were showing a 2.68 rating on a four-point scale, and trends were just not heading in the right direction. And so we recommended at that time going to a Phase III drought warning. And it's kind of funny how things happen because it's like 24 hours later, it started to rain, and we've been receiving some much-needed rainfall since then. It hasn't been enough to make up the deficit, obviously, but has certainly given us better certainty going into the winter months, which is what we were hoping for, particularly with respect to stream flows and reservoir levels, which we've told you before are primary indicators. But this is kind of an interesting graphic that we put up here. This is the state of North Dakota drought monitor a month ago, August 23rd, and then September 20th. And you can see that we're making some gradual improvement. So that really is good news. Just circled Cass County where we live, right there doesn't reflect all of our watersheds that we rely on. But just here at home, you can see that we're making some decent progress. So this is the most recent monitoring summary based on data that we're collecting as of last Friday, September 17th. And it's important to note on this graphic that at the August 23rd commission meeting, we were utilizing mid-August data, which at the time had us at a 2.68 rating. And that was the basis for us recommending going to a Phase III. Fortunately, the last week of August, we have gotten very decent and much-needed rainfall, and that's impacted our indicator ratings. So now roughly 30 days later, conditions have improved to a mid-September level of 1.78. And looking at how things are expected to trend through the winter gives us much more confidence going into the winter months. So based on this information, I'm going to have Troy come up and talk very briefly about those four indicators again. The guy's a scientist at heart, so he can go a long time. But the recommendation tonight would be to move back to a Phase II drought advisory level at this point in time. So Troy, if you could go through the four indicators and then just show those new stream flow graphics, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Bruce, Mayor, Commissioners. Yeah, with the four indicators, we look at the Palmer Drought Superior Index. That really hasn't changed, even though we've had some rain. It hasn't changed. The standard precipitation index, even though we have some rain, we're still about four inches below normal in Fargo-Moorhead. We've had less in Lake Country where we really need it. But like Bruce said, the stream flow and reservoir levels came down. So that's what's given us the indication to go to a Phase II. This is a graph from July 1st to present with the Red River. And we can see that stretch in the kind of mid-August where it really dipped and that pushed us, it was very concerning. Then the rain came, and it's been kind of bouncing ever since. But we're sitting fairly decent right now, but it tends to trend down back to where the dam releases by Fergus Falls get to, but it's looking a little better. And then this is stream flows in the Cheyenne River. They bounced up a little bit, too, and they'll come down to about where the dam release levels are. It does pick up a little flow from Valley City to getting here by Kindred. So that's looking better, but trending down. So as far as drought responses, again, the main thing is, in Phase II, is going to odd-even watering restrictions. And just so you know, since we went to Phase III, since we adopted that, we're down about 28% in water use. So it dropped away significantly with the restrictions and then with the rain coming. So very helpful. So we'd like to move back to Phase II. And then the motion is to change the Phase II designation. Would that take any questions?
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any questions at Troy? Mr. Carr.
I don't know if it's for Troy, but was there compliance issues? Were there any offenders? And did people, you said it was 28% or whatever lower for usage, so that's a good sign, but were there any problems with enforcing the one-day restriction?
Right. Well, what we did, the phase, you know, we went to Phase III, and then it took a little bit because this is new to us from the enforcement. We haven't done that in quite a while. So we did monitor. We were driving around monitoring locations that were, could have been violations, but it started raining. People's lawns turned green, and then we just invest the resources in rechecking those because the rains came, the demands dropped, and so we didn't move further with that.
Fair enough.
Any other discussion? Maybe a guy who had a lawn service knew it's going to rain, huh?
I told you.
Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break, come back here at 6:11. Call the meeting back to order. We have an update for our class public health and escalating drug use overdoses and deaths in the community. Robbins Halls to talk to us today.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you for having me. This is an update to the report that I presented on February 8th, 2021. And what I'm going to do tonight is real briefly, we'll review the finalized 2020 drug-related death data from the Cass County Coroner. What I presented in February was preliminary data. We'll also take a look at national, state, and local increases in 2020 for drug overdose. We'll also look at the available drug-related death data that we have so far for 2021. And we will take a look at projected rates of change, whether it be an increase or a decrease, from our 2020 rates to 2021 rates. We'll take a look at Fargo Police Department's number of non-fatal and fatal drug overdose cases. And we will also compare six-month data from Fargo-Cass Public Health Syringe Services Program. So this is a look at increases that we saw from 2019 to 2020. On the left side there, those are the increases. We had increases for the total number of drug overdose deaths, the opioid-related drug overdose deaths, as well as the methamphetamine overdose-related deaths. And there were very considerable increases, 55% for all drugs excluding alcohol, 40% for opioids, and 79% for meth. Now, taking a look at this year, I do have hopefully a little bit of hope to offer in that the projected change is that some of those rates may actually go down. We projected, based on the data that we have so far this year, and it is possible that we could see an 8% reduction in the total number of drug overdose deaths excluding alcohol. We are looking at about a 14% increase in our opioid-related deaths, and we're hoping for a 14% decrease in the meth-related overdose deaths. So this is a look at overdose deaths in the nation, in our states, and in our local county here. And these are from the Cass County Coroner. So from 2019 to 2020, the nation had a 32% increase, and in fact, there were over 93,000 deaths as a result of overdose. Minnesota preliminarily has a 27% increase. North Dakota had a 49% increase, and Cass County had a 55% increase. So just to show that this is happening unfortunately around the country. This is a look at our opioid-related deaths, the data from the Cass County Coroner, and it shows 2016 through September 15th of this year, as well as the projected number. In 2020, we had 21 deaths. It's projected that we will have about 24. So far this year, we have had 17. For the methamphetamine or meth-related deaths, as you can see, we have all the numbers again, 2016 through September 15th of this year, as well as a projected 2021 total. We do actually show that a decrease is projected, which is good because we had a very large increase from 2019 to 2020. So far this year, we have 26 deaths. This is just a comparison of meth and opioid-related deaths, again, data from our Cass County Coroner. And the reason that we do show this is because over the last five years, we had kind of a mix, we had a complete turnaround, if you will, where we started out with opioid deaths almost being twice the amount of meth deaths, and now in 2020, the opposite was true, where we had twice the amount of meth deaths that we did for opioid-related deaths. We take a look at all drug-related deaths. This would be all illicit drugs, all prescription drugs, anything excluding alcohol. In 2020, we had a total of 59. The projected for 2021 is 54, so a decrease is projected. And then so far this year, through the 15th of September, we've had 38. And this is a look at the Fargo Police Department's data of the number of cases that they have had for both non-fatal and fatal overdose deaths. And as you can see, they have had a significant increase in the amount of cases that they've seen. 2020 had a very large increase. 2021 is projected to be even a larger increase. And through the end of August this year, they have surpassed the number of cases that they had in all of 2020. So they're seeing a lot of cases. But there is one thing that I see in this graph here that I'd like to point out, and that is the fact, if we take a look at the fatal cases versus the non-fatal cases, the fatal are in red, the non-fatal are in pink, we have a lot of people that are actually surviving overdose. So that is also very good news that I'm happy to share with you. And it is also showing that a lot of the interventions or the strategies that we have done here locally are actually working, paying off, more people are surviving. Now, I'm going to take a look at our Syringe Services Program data from a comparison between January through June of 2020, the first half of 2021, and compare it with the last half of 2020, so July through December of 2020. So our Syringe Services Program in the first half of this year saw a large increase in the number of naloxone that was distributed. In fact, it was an 85% increase. Naloxone, or Narcan, is, excuse me, an antidote for opioid overdose, and it actually reverses opioid overdose and saves lives. We had an 86% increase in the amount of reported opioid overdose reversals. So that would be individuals that came back to us at our Syringe Service Program and reported to us that the Narcan or naloxone they received from us was indeed used to save a life. So again, this is showing that our efforts are paying off, we're getting the word out. People are coming to us, they're getting the Narcan, and they're using it. We had a 24% increase in the amount of participants we served in that six-month period when compared with the previous six months. We had an 18% increase in new enrollments, and we had a 17% increase in total number of visits. So the number of new enrollments, the number of visits, it did increase, but not greatly. So perhaps maybe we are seeing a little bit of a slowdown, especially when we compared to the first half of 2020 with the second half of 2020, we saw a huge uptick. What we'd like to report most of all, though, is that 281 lives were saved as a result of Narcan that was distributed to our participants at our Syringe Services Program. That is in a six-month period. That is in a six-month period, so two hundred and eighty-one times Narcan or naloxone was taken from our program by a participant and used to save the life of someone else, to reverse opioid overdose. And this is a look at our six-month comparisons, not in percentages, but in numbers. So the first category there is saves, again, that is the number of individuals whose opioid overdose was reversed and saved a life. So we have the um twenty twenty-one statistics on top, and then the, in the orange, we have the twenty twenty statistics. As you can see, we distributed three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine doses of Narcan or naloxone at our Syringe Services Program in the first six months of this year, and that's where we got that eighty-five percent increase. Um, there we, next, we have the number of individuals that were served, so we served six hundred and seventy-eight in that six-month period. There we, uh, next, we have the number of visits, so um almost twenty-eight hundred visits, and then the last statistic there is the new enrollments that we saw, uh comparing those two time periods, so we saw two hundred and twenty-five new enrollments. And again, I just want to refer everyone to the CDC recommendations for public health departments to deal with and to prevent overdose death and overdoses, and um I just wanted to remind you, I did review this in February, but we have implemented some of them, and, and I believe that they're working. So in summary, drug-related deaths increased significantly at the national, state, and local levels from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. Meth-related deaths increased in Cass County from two thousand eighteen through twenty twenty, but they may decrease in twenty twenty-one. Opioid-related deaths may increase in twenty twenty-one, but at a met- but at a much lower rate than in twenty twenty. Fargo Police Department's number of overdose cases increased significantly in twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one has already outpaced twenty twenty. Fargo-Cass Public Health Syringe Services Program saw substantial increases in the number of naloxone doses distributed and saves the first half of twenty twenty-one compared to the second half of twenty twenty. And lastly, I would just like to say that Fargo-Cass Public Health's harm reduction programs and staff have been utilizing many strategies to address overdose, and I think as a result, we are seeing um some, some more positive uh data coming out. Thank you.
Excellent report, thank you. Any questions, the Commissioners? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, boy, we have some role, um, heroes in our midst, saving lives and doing some good work, and Robin, you and your team have been doing this for some time. I know we get distracted with things like COVID and pandemics, but this, this work continues and it's important. My question is this, and I'm, I might be putting you into an uncomfortable zone, but if you had a magic wand or had advice for us, maybe unpopular advice, what should we do? What can we do? What, what is it we're not seeing that we need to do locally to, 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 to improve this situation for the people that are so impacted?
Well, I think prevention is key, not getting people to this point to begin with is, is very important, and unfortunately, prevention is underfunded in our states and um, and when, and with COVID, we, we hardly have the time to devote to prevention like we should. So that definitely is one key, you know, if I had a magic wand, we would devote more time, more people, more funds to prevention, and then the other key is getting more, getting more people into treatment. I'm happy to report that individuals at our Syringe Services Program are getting into treatment. The last time that I provided direct services there, we had a couple that came back to the program, a married couple, they had been, um, they went through treatment, they had been, um, they had not been using for eighteen months and fifteen months, um, eighteen months for the wife, fifteen months for the husband. The husband was now gainfully employed at the treatment center that he attended, they had their child back in the backseat of the car with them, and they had a new puppy. And we oftentimes don't see or hear from those individuals because everything that we do there is anonymous, and oftentimes people are hesitant to return because it could potentially be a trigger for them to start using again. And so we do, every once in a while, we're lucky, they returned to us because they wanted to get Narcan to give to friends of theirs that were still using, but most times, we don't see these people come back. So if we can have more stories of recovery, if we can get more individuals in recovery, and if recovery could be better funded, that also would be a huge help. And on top of it, too, we also talk about, you know, all of, um, you know, for example, the housing issue um was, was very important at today's meeting, and housing first is, is a great component that helps individuals, um, if they get housed, they can work on other issues like, you know, getting to treatment, um, using less substances, things like that. Housing is really important, um, that's another thing, um, a- and just making sure that, that people are okay, having those connections in our community with other people, and so, yeah, so anything that we can do to help those that may be lonely, hungry, unhoused, unemployed, you name it, that will, will help with this issue as well.
Thank you. Any other comment? Commissioner Strand?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. Um, now I'm gonna put the mayor in an uncomfortable spot. Mayor Mahoney, you played a huge role in the creation and, and the launching of the Blue Ribbon Commission a few years back that was a multi-community approach, that we, we really got some good traction locally, but that, things have changed. Uh, could you comment on your vision of us going back at that community approach with something like a Blue Ribbon Commission, or, I know you've mentioned it, but I, I, if you don't mind, because I think we need to talk about the funding, uh, issues, we really do, and we need to talk about the treatment numbers and how we can breathe life into these needs that have been spelled out to us.
So we got together recently, it's Mayor West Fargo and Cass County Chairman Chad Peterson, and we wanna re-up the Blue Ribbon Panel to have a rediscussion on this with Robin and her team and see if there's other things we need to do. As you know, Commissioner Strand, in the budget, there's a million dollars for nonprofits, and if some people could take advantage of that, help in some of the areas of rehab and recovery, that would be helpful. We also wanna search out, I'm encouraged by some of your numbers, but it's amazing the amount of Narcan that's in the community and how it's being utilized, but I think we then have to relook at, Commissioner Strand, are there any other uh things we need to do? I liked it when you asked your wish list, we are working on that. Housing is a big part of the project that people are doing right now. Jan is doing a great job on a lot of those different issues, but we're a little deterred because of COVID right now, but we will get back at it because her team's a little taxed at the present time, but we will restart that this fall and have a rediscussion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
Yeah, if I could just add support for that idea. Uh, you and I were in a meeting not too long ago where the providers were actually asking for that to be restarted again, um, to help coordinate amongst agencies, so it'll be nice, be good to get that going again.
Yes. Mr. Preston had a meeting recently with some of the downtown issues, we need to discuss that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item thirty-six, recommendation from Finance Department to follow city policy regarding high water consumption and hold property owner at five thirty-four twenty-first Street North responsible for associated bill. Steve Sprague to explain.
A good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, we've had a, a property owner that, that has a property, um, and it had uh some high consumption, and uh, and so they've come to the city, uh, asking for, you know, a, um, a waiver or, or asking for some money um off on their bill. Um, the facts is, we know them, uh, Bob Kenstead is the, is the gentleman that is here tonight. Uh, his wife owns the property at five thirty-four twenty-first Street North. Uh, Bob and his, and his wife do not live at this property, and in fact, they collect rent for this property. Uh, Bob has informed the city that there's a vulnerable adult living at the property. The normal water usage with this property with this tenant is three thousand gallons per month. On consecutive months, the meter read seven thousand, then sixteen thousand, and then seventy-four thousand gallons. Uh, city staff advised them that they um have high consumption and potentially a, a faulty toilet. Um, the meter department technician was dispatched to the property, uh, he tested the meter in place and the meter um proved to be accurate. Uh, he did change out the meter register, which is the, you know, it goes through the meter and then it sends a signal out, out to, uh, so that it can be read. Um, the toilet was also inspected, and we are not plumbers, but we can look at toilets and, and kinda make an, uh, you know, a determination, and at that time, the, the toilet appeared to be functioning properly. Um, the meter has been read with the new register on it every three to four days, just to monitor consumption and make sure everything is, is working appropriately, and that uh register that we removed is um, is being tested and, and, or was tested and proved uh to be accurate. Um, the meter department staff did offer to remove the meter and do a full test on it, uh, but it was not an option because the, where the meter was located, they would have had to remove um a bathroom cabinet. Um, and the meter uh just last month now is back to normal consumption, in fact, it only read one thousand gallons, uh, which is an indication of intermittent um malfunction of the toilet. Uh, the city policy that we've always used, um, is that we cannot control what happens to the water once it goes through the meter, and so once it, once we've got the consumption, you know, it must be billed. Um, we have many examples of toilets that, uh, that show that they're faulty. We had one customer that normally billed two thousand, um, and in consecutive months went to forty-two and then eighty-four thousand. That customer hired a plumber, fixed the toilets, and is back to a normal consumption. We currently have a customer that has over a thousand-dollar bill due to two months in a row of high consumption, um, and that customer, we've made payment arrangements with. They're gonna pay their normal bill plus a hundred a month until they get caught back up. So you say seventy-four thousand gallons sounds like a lot, um, and I agree. So do a little bit of math, um, a one-point-five, a low flush toilet, one-point-five gallon per flush toilet will fill in thirty seconds, so that's three gallons per minute, times sixty minutes is a hundred and eighty gallons in an hour, times twenty-four hours is four thousand gallons per day, times thirty days is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand gallons. If we wanna reverse that in Bob's situation, we have seventy-four thousand gallons used, divided by the forty-three hundred gallons, um, is seventeen days with that intermittent problem. Seventeen days, now, they don't have to be consecutive, but thirty, through that thirty-day period, uh, between when it was re- read at sixteen thousand and then at seventy-four thousand gallons, seventeen of those days it was stuck open. Um, Bob talked to the utility billing supervisor, uh, didn't like their explanation, um, was referred to the city auditor. Um, city auditor explained what we, um, and, you know, think that the problem is, um, didn't like that explanation, was forwarded to the finance committee, uh, you know, quite unusual to go to the finance committee with a high utility bill. Uh, was given seventeen minutes to testify, and now he's appealing it to the city commission. If there are any other appeals, it would go to district court.
Mr. Gary? What's the dollar amount?
Dollar amount is three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay, thanks.
I believe Bob is here.
Bob, do you wanna speak, or?
Yes, I do. First off, I wanna thank you for letting me testify tonight. I'm a very honest and trustworthy resident, so is my wife. Um, I wanted to bring this to the attention because our water usage has never been like this, ever, but every time I bring this up to friends, coworkers, colleagues and stuff, and explain to them that we're being approached with a water bill for seventy-four thousand gallons of water usage in thirty days by a single woman living at our home, she's our caretaker, gives her a place to live, and also helps me and my wife maintain the home. I've checked that toilet over and over and still state to ta- to tonight that there is no malfunction of our toilet. If there was, it would have been corrected immediately, and we would not be incurring these increases in water consumption, like Steve reported, two thousand gallons, seven thousand, sixteen thousand, and all the way up to seventy-four thousand. That's just plain ridiculous at this particular home. Maybe some other customers did have issues with their toilets and they weren't rectified, and they let their water bills increase. The technician came out and tried to diagnose the problem, he could not find out a reason for this, he did change out the register, he quote-unquote, "He did it to make me happy." He said, "I cannot find any other reason why you guys have gone through seventy-four thousand gallons of water." The water department also offered to come out and take readings. They are currently taking readings this whole month of September, and I was given a printout from last of August to September third. It shows normal water usage with the new register on our water valve. Fine, they will continue doing this till the end of this month, I'm hoping to get a second printout of the remaining readings till the end of this month. I just received my current August utility statement, and what is really questionable is back in July, we had seventy-four thousand gallons of water usage, now with my current utility statement, it has dropped to one thousand gallons of water usage with no explanation. The consensus is that my toilet miraculously corrected itself, and now it's operating properly. Well, a toilet that is operating properly from the get-go and on the onset of this cannot miraculously correct itself if there was no malfunctioning toilet in the first place. The toilet's been checked and checked and checked, and we have no failure in the flapper, we have no failure of the water fill valve on this toilet. I've been over the house, my wife's been at the house, the tenant that we have there, our caretaker, she assures us that there has been no issues with that toilet causing these increases in water usage. It's a mystery why the old register registered these increases in water usage the last three months. Now all of a sudden, we've got a new register on our water valve, and it's dropped from seventy-four thousand to a thousand. I'm back down to paying a forty-six-dollar utility statement for the month of August in addition to the previous billing for the excessive water usage. My current utility bill is four hundred and thirteen dollars. What I'm asking for in consideration is because we can't seem to determine where seventy-four thousand gallons of water went to, or sixteen thousand gallons of water went to, or seven thousand gallons, all the way up from original start of two thousand normal water usage at this residence. So I'm looking for some type of adjustment so that we can start over fresh, maintain our forty-six-dollar utility bill. My wife and me are on a budget, and to be charged for excessive water use, which we did not incur, I do not know why the register registered that, why the readings from a current reading to a previous reading.
Thanks, Bob. Any Commissioners have any questions? Bob, you presented this to the Finance, just so you know, our water team went over there several times and checked the meter, his meter is, we go and check it right till it goes into the house, and unless it goes to the house, we can't check anything, but they checked the meter and checked everything at the time, and so, uh, we've asked Bob to have a plumber come over there sometime, but you did have a plumber come over?
After Commissioner Peppcorn recommended that, I did go contact and consult a plumber.
Did he find anything?
They have not been able to come to the house due to labor shortages and the scheduling. They can't get me in to come over prior to tonight's meeting. Um, at that Finance meeting, I took all the recommendations from each person that was there. The Finance Director, he heard enough after Commissioner Peppcorn recommended a plumber, he told me that they had more important things to do, that a three hundred and sixty-six-dollar water bill for a Fargo resident was pretty trivial, and that I should move on and pay the bill and just let it go. Well, I feel it's a principle thing because I've never experienced something like this before in all the years I've been a resident of Fargo and a homeowner. If it is my responsibility as a homeowner and there was a malfunctioning toilet, I take full responsibility.
Okay.
But I can honestly tell you, this is not the case, and I do not appreciate being forced down to me that I do have a malfunctioning toilet, when it's not the truth.
Thank you, Bob. Do I have a motion from the Commission? One motion would be to consider the bill and leave it as it is, or if you want a different motion? I don't know which Commissioner brought this up. Nobody? Commissioner Strand?
Well, actually, Mayor, I, 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 I received a call from, from Mr. Kenstead, and he asked to, for my ear and indicated it was on the consent agenda, and I suggested that he get signed up to speak at tonight's meeting, and in that process, it was moved from consent agenda over to the regular agenda, so I facilitated him getting an ear from us tonight, a hearing. I, I, I'll ask this question, have we- Have we ever, have we ever, are there some instances where we like, say, can we meet you halfway, or can we like, just get this past us, or can we work past this, or?
Because we have no control of the water once it goes through the meter, we have never done an adjustment. I can think of one case where a gentleman, and this one went to Finance too, Commissioner Pepcorn might remember, where a gentleman, as he was leaving his house for the winter, turned a valve that filled his pool that had been filled in. He didn't have a pool anymore, but he didn't disconnect that valve. He turned that valve and walked out the door, thinking he was shutting off the water. And that bill, I believe, was two thousand seven hundred dollars, if I'm remembering right. And, you know, it went through the meter. We can't control what happens after that.
Mr. Chair, so that's the policy, and I think that's, we have to follow our policy. If we don't follow the policy, then we're setting a new precedent.
Can I have a motion to say that? Commissioner Pepcorn?
I am reluctant to make any motion. The other thing that bothered me is, if you have this problem, call a plumber. And instead, we've gotten this continuous thing, meeting with all these people, call a plumber, number one. That's what you do, number one, not meet with the mayor and the Finance Committee and the, it's like, good lord, call a plumber.
Can I speak?
No, Bob, we're having discussion now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Garrett?
I'll make the motion to uphold the policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
You have, before you adopt the two thousand twenty-two City of Fargo budget proposed tax levies, it's approved the preliminary two thousand twenty-two budget as amended to include the three point five percent competitive wage adjustment as a final budget for two thousand twenty-two and the proposed tax levies as presented. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a counter to your approved motion, and I would like to remove the two mills for the airport and remove that from your budget. That's my motion. Otherwise, approve the rest of the budget. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Commissioner Preston?
The thing that concerns me when I'm looking at removing the two mills is the amount of reserves that the Municipal Airport Authority has. To me, a reserve account is for probably covering up to six months of operational expenses, but the reserve fund they have in place is certainly much, much larger than that. So I guess I will probably support this amendment to the budget. I do think that the reserve fund should be probably looked at.
Commissioner Garrett?
So their reserve isn't used like ours. Ours is used more like a rainy day fund. For them, they pay for things upfront, right? They build it up and then they pay it off. There are bills. For us in the City of Fargo, we own a debt, right? We take a special assessment out, that's a debt, and we get paid off through property taxes. I wish we could do it their way because they're not paying for interest on their loan, right? They're paying off in cash, whereas we pay interest on our loans, and then we pass that along to the taxpayer. So when you call it a reserve, it's not really a reserve, it's a savings account. And they dip into their savings accounts when they have to, you know, pour eighty thousand yards or whatever the heck it was of concrete, you know what I mean? So I think we should, I think if you're going to take away those mills, you should really look at how that budget is operated there first before we jump into doing that. So I won't support that. If I can continue with the rest of the budget, if I could.
We have a motion on the floor if you want to.
I just want, I'll speak to it.
Speak to it.
Yep. So there are things in this budget that I like. I like there were setting aside money, for example, for the fire department, Station Eight. We desperately need that in South Fargo. But there's a lot of things in this budget I don't like. But to be clear, if there's two things that we could compromise on, I would be for the budget. If we do these two things, we'd still have everything that we need in the budget to run local government and go and do much more, in my opinion. We can give a pay raise to all employees, and we can reduce property taxes by three mills, which is about ten percent of the city's property taxes. These two things are very, very simple. One would be to cut the Arts and Social Services Fund, which is one mill, which is a charity that we run as a city. Two would be to take the COLA from three point five percent down to the three two one percent that I had offered before, giving the lowest ranking employees the higher raise and the higher employees a lower raise. And in doing so, we'd save about two and a half or three million dollars. So we can do all the important things the city is supposed to do. We can show the employees that we care by giving them a raise, and we can lower property taxes by showing the people of Fargo that we aren't just going to pocket this massive increase. Our property tax revenue has doubled in the last ten years, doubled. That's crazy. And our mills are basically the same. So we need to, while we're showing the employees that we care about them, they're doing a great job, we also need to show the people of Fargo that we do care about you, and we do care about you paying your taxes, and we want you to build homes and live in homes. And right now, we have sixty percent apartments, and that number's growing. More people are moving out of homes. They don't want to pay the taxes. They don't want to deal with the water bills and things like that. So if we can do those two things, I'd before the budget, I'm certainly not going to approve pulling the mills for the airport. It's very important, and we're going to actually lose probably twenty million dollars or so in federal funding if we do that.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, Commissioner Pepcorn was on the liaison to the airport before I was, and in this, we've all worked pretty hard on both sides to try to figure out our future together. It's no secret that right now, where we're at, at the request of the airport, we've acquiesced to say, yes, you can separate from the city. You can go on your own, you can be independent, you can be your own authority. And we would, to a degree, except for statutorily, sever the connection that the city has largely over the airport. I support that. I begrudgingly supported it, but eventually I came around to supporting the notion that I think it is a better future for them to have their own independent authority. I didn't expect, however, when we were going down this path for the last almost two years, that that would suggest or include us continuing to fund up to four mills, but traditionally two mills, in our budget. In my mind, going separate means you go separate. And I'm not wanting to penalize the airport. I want to say, maybe, Mayor, you know, but I want to say their reserves, Commissioner Preston mentioned it, I believe they're over thirty million. Prior to the COVID funds, which were twenty-some million, I believe that's a bigger reserve than the City of Fargo has. I also agree, though, I believe sincerely, that going forward, if the City of Fargo agrees to partner and cost-share capital improvement projects with the airport, that's fine, that's the way it should be. Proactively upfront, set up the agreements, establish your terms, know what your contributions will be, and plan it accordingly. This notion that because we've done it in the past is a justification for going forward, I'm not on board with that just because. I believe the City of Fargo should sit down with the airport, starting immediately, and decide what cost shares do you want, and what can we agree to do, and how will we do it? Then we have a justification for asking for a millage from the city. But at this point in time, I don't think that's happened. Well, it hasn't happened. We've not mapped out our cost-sharing mutually, and I think that's, in my opinion, that's necessary and starting next year's budget. But so I join with Commissioner Pepcorn in his motion at this point in time that, in my opinion, that two mills hasn't been predetermined to be funded. We haven't set out our terms to fund it. We can, if we choose to, by statute, we may fund it, doesn't mean we're obligated to. So this is a good path going forward, to clarify, as the separation happens, to clarify exactly how will we move into the future.
Ken Costin, can you come to the spot? If Commissioner Pepcorn's motion prevails, that means that the two mills at the airport as requested would no longer be done. Our mill levy then would drop to fifty-one, as I would understand it. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's currently fifty-three mills, Mayor, and so if you were to remove two mills from the airport, it'd be fifty-one mills.
Okay.
And all of those mills would accrue to the benefit of the city and not to the airport at all.
Would we stay at fifty-three, or would be drawn to fifty-one?
No, if you're moving to deny two mills, that means you're subtracting off two mills from the fifty-three, so you would have passed on approval of fifty-one mills.
Fifty-one mills, and all revenue would go to the city. There would no revenue come out to the airport.
That's correct.
Mr. Garrett?
We had Eric Lynn, the President of the Airport Authority, and Sean Devers, the Director, come up and tell us why they need these mills. It's not abnormal, it's not crazy, this is not out of the blue. You guys asked them to come, they did come, and now you're saying that you didn't have an opportunity to talk to them. I'm fairly certain if you call them up, they'll tell you about it. Sean Devers, he loves talking about this stuff. He'll tell you an hour-long story about it. Eric Lynn is a very approachable guy. He'll come talk to you about it. So say that we're caught off guard, that we're doing it just because, whatever the reasons, I don't, to my knowledge, none of you met with them personally. I know you did. But none of the Commissioners did. So if you had, they would tell you why. So if you don't know why they're asking for it, then either you should have let them again and asked them, or they weren't being clear. So to be clear, this is a city airport. We didn't break ties. All we did was, they no longer do our financing. They don't write the checks anymore. We don't for them. We don't do their IS, their computer services. There's like five things we just don't do for them anymore. It was just services. They're still a city airport. And if we harm the city airport, it's going to harm the City of Fargo.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Preston?
So I did meet with them, and I do understand, I think, to a large degree, how they finance their capital improvements. The one question I have, and perhaps you can answer this, are they able to incur debt to do capital improvements?
Yes, I believe the answer, and I might have to validate that with Eric, but yes, they can issue debt. However, you have to approve the debt. You have the ultimate decision over the debt that's levied by the airport. So they can't levy it on their own.
One more point, if I could make. So that's where I think the financing of capital improvements for the city is very different than the way the municipal authority is doing. Don't know if one is right, one is wrong, but it certainly is different. It sounded to me like they're paying for stuff by cash, with cash. Either federal grants, or they dip into the reserve fund until they get those federal grants in place, or they have some other sources of funding. So I guess, you know, I'm not completely convinced that the vetting process for capital improvement projects is probably as vigorous, probably, as it needs to be, and could be perhaps examined a little more closely if it was a different method of financing them, to be honest with you.
So for the federal grants, what oftentimes happens is the federal project, they pay ninety percent. Five percent is paid for by state, and then five percent is paid by the Airport Authority. So typically, they pay that out either the mill levy, or they pay that out of their own reserve fund, as you mentioned. We had a discussion early on this spring. Commissioner Strand did bring it up to them as they're separating from us, that the mill levy is something that they should come before the City Commission, explain their budget, and explain what they're going to use it for, and should have had discussion if we did or did not like that. The de-icing stuff, they very much had to have fixed, and then there's some airport expansion they've done as well. Commissioner Pepcorn, you and I talked about this, and I would be more happy if we did this next year, but understand your feelings on this at this time and the concern. Commissioner Strand, you and I also talked about this. If you're going out on your own, you're going out on your own, and it appears sometimes they don't understand the full rationale behind that, going on their own, that we articulated when we had our mediation meetings with them. So my preference would be to wait till next year, but do understand the motion. Do we have any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Preston?
Aye.
Mahoney?
No.
Carlotta, did you vote yes?
I'm sorry?
Did you vote yes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
Sorry, was I not? Did you catch it, Dan?
Yes.
With the mask, probably hard to.
Second reading and final adoption of the ordinance relating to classification of ordinance violations yielding and stopping while operating a bicycle. I have a motion.
Is there a recommended?
This is a second reading.
So this needs to be handled in a little bit unusual manner because a second reading, there's two steps that normally are followed, and on the consent agenda, it's kind of a no-brainer, but in order to waive the actual requirement of reading verbatim, word-for-word the ordinance, there needs to be unanimous approval to waive the reading. I think we're going to get a negative vote on the ultimate outcome here. So my suggestion is to first have a motion to waive the second reading at length of this particular ordinance, then we can actually move to have a motion to approve and second, to have final passage and enactment of the ordinance.
I'll make that first motion.
I'll second it.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to damage anything. I know this is just, it's stuff you got to do, but I just want to have the opportunity to vote no, just to prove how ridiculous it is and how unsafe it is that some people can go through a stop sign and some people can't. That's just, so thank you.
So you may vote yes for us on the waiving part?
Have to listen to the reading?
We better go through the proper motions here.
Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Do we have a motion now?
Yeah, so the next motion then is to, for final passage and approval of the ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Movement seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Can I just ask, so I just want to clarify, so now I can vote no without getting any trouble?
Correct, absolutely.
Did you want me to try to add into this ordinance retiring city attorneys as well are exempt from following track?
That'd be preferred, although I'm not sure if it'd make any difference.
Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. You have my appointments at the Fargo Youth Initiative. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Movement seconded, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
The Fargo Youth Initiative did a nice presentation to the Fargo School of City Board and the Commission, very good board, on communication and trying to work with each other. It was a really nicely done project. Any other business for the evening, Commissioner Strand?
Yes, absolutely. I'll be brief, but, you know, one of our key staff people today is home with family, and we all work with Nicole Crutchfield a lot. I just hope that while she's home tending to her family's circumstances, that she knows we're wishing her a really good birthday. And I'm sure there's a wealth for her on her birthday to be with her mother. So just sending good energies to Nicole. And then in about ten days, we can send Tim Gilmore a happy birthday.
Thank you. Move to adjourn?
So move.
Second.